Good evening. It's Tuesday, November 11th at 5:30 PM. We welcome you to our Provo Municipal Council meeting. We'll begin with a roll call, starting with Counselor Handley. George Handley.
Becky Bogdan.
Rachel Whipple.
Gary Garrett.
Catrice McKay.
Travis Hoven.
And do we have Counselor Christensen online? Kevin or Malia? Can you, can you hear us, Counselor Christensen? If he's not there, right? Okay, very good.
I can, thank you.
Thank you, Craig. We also welcome Mayor Kafusi. Our opening prayer tonight will be given by Richard Bowler. He is actually a member of our library board and helps with many of the city's independent audit functions as well. Richard?
Father in heaven, we are indeed grateful to be able to meet here together in this city council meeting. We're especially mindful of the blessing that we have of living in a country that is governed by democratic principles and that recognizes the likes of individuals. We ask thy blessing to be on this council that they are, will act in wisdom and understanding of the citizens, the residents of the city for whom they work and represent. We are mindful of those who have served in the military, since this is a holiday honoring them. And the blessing it is of having this free country and having the protection that that freedom has from our military. We're thankful for all that we have and pray thy blessing upon this group here in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Richard. Thank you also for your recognition of the military on this Veterans Day. Speaking of, we are pleased to have lead us in the pledge tonight, Retired Sergeant Samuel Ray Omen, who served in the Army. He is recipient of a Bronze Star of a Purple Heart for saving lives under fire in Vietnam, until he was wounded himself and has been since retired. Mr. Omen, thank you for being here. And he will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the republic for which it stands, the nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Woo-hoo!
Thank you, Sergeant Omen. First on our agenda, we are pleased also to be able to recognize the recent graduates of the, of this year's class of the Provology course of study here at, in Provo. We'll turn the time over to our Chief Administrative Officer, Scott Henderson, to recognize this group.
Ten weeks these Provo citizens have dedicated to become more informed about their community. The Fall Class of 2025 now stands as among the most informed citizens we have in our community. I'd like to ask the mayor and council chair to join me for the reading of the graduate names and certificate presentation. We would say to the graduates, please stay up front after receiving your certificate for a group photo. And Kevin, if you can cue the music. Mary Adams. Robert Adams. Alora Casper. Mary Ann Cicatelli. Did I do okay with that last name? Okay, I gave it my best shot. All right, maybe whisper in my ear. And we have Tom Cicatelli. Jeremy Friedbaum. Thanks, Gary. Eliza Quijardo. Darrell Hammond. Joanna Hammond. Jonathan Handy. Garrett Lyman. We didn't grade for attendance sometimes. Lori Peace. Don Whitehead. And last name, Taylor Whitehead. And that is the Fall 2025 Graduating Class of Provology.
So we'll, we have a little dinner for you in the community room and a thank you for participating in our Provology class. And Heidi, raise your hand, Heidi. She'll get you over there and get you taken care of. Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thanks again to all of you. We know that accomplishment will find its way on your resume. Next, we have a, another ceremony recognizing the Provo City Employee of the Month. And Mayor Kafusi will lead us in this.
This has been such a wonderful program we've started with our employees and it's been really fun because I know how great they are. So for me to be able to come in front of the council and show off these employees has been really exciting and able to spotlight them means a lot from each department. And so we're excited because tonight we're doing Parks and Rec. So I will ask Doug, Director Robbins, to come up and let's do the Employee of the Month.
Thank you, Mayor and Municipal Council. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to come present to you. It's really a privilege to work with some exceptional people in Provo City. And tonight we had the opportunity to recognize John Bunderson, who joined the Parks and Recreation Department five and a half years ago after managing civil infrastructure projects across the country, bringing depth and technical strength to our project management teams. As project manager and responsible for capital improvement plans, John's contributions have been nothing short of remarkable. John, you better come on up here.
Yeah, I was like, where is the guy? Let's get him up here.
He has found innovative ways to stretch every dollar, strategically combining RAP funds, development impact fees, and grant funds to deliver high-quality projects that enhance our parks and public spaces. When I think of John, I, three words come to mind: dedication, detail, and delivery. John Bunderson is truly all in. He takes ownership of his work and represents the city with pride. And consistently, he delivers results. His ability to build and maintain strong relationships with state and federal partners has positioned Provo as a trusted steward of public funds. When agencies invest in Provo, they know that their dollars are going toward meaningful, well-managed projects. In the last two years alone, John has been responsible to help secure more than $4 million in grant funding for park improvements and accomplished, an accomplishment that speaks volumes about his professionalism and his commitment to, to community. John is thorough. We like to joke about how many questions he asks. But experience has taught me that when John starts asking questions, good things follow. His keen eye for detail helps us avoid mistakes. His insights often lead to thoughtful, forward-looking recommendations that make projects more sustainable and effective. John does not just plan, he delivers. He stays focused on outcomes, pushes deadlines, and tack, and tackles challenges head-on. His steady leadership and strong work ethic save taxpayer dollars, improve public spaces, and keep our projects moving forward, turning vision into reality. But what truly sets John apart is his character. He, he values collaboration and genuinely enjoys working with people. He is always reading, reflecting, and finding ways to make a positive impact, both professionally and personally. John shares that he loves being a husband and father and believes that to him, improvement starts with reviewing what's going right and building on that success. That simple yet powerful mindset reflects his approach to both his work and his life. So to John's wife Amanda and their children Rosalyn and Jonah, we extend our heartfelt thanks. John is a vital part of our leadership team and we're grateful for the support that you provide that allows him to make such a difference in the community. So on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department, we recognized, recognized John Bunderson as Employee of the Month for November 2025. Thank you for your dedication, your professionalism, and your unwavering commitment to excellence. Congratulations, John.
Congratulations again, John. Thank you. We'll now excuse Mayor Kafusi, who has another obligation. At this hour, we'll begin our public comment period. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. Please notice that items five and six on the agenda have been continued to a future meeting and will not be heard this evening. For items that do not appear on the agenda, public comment will still be taken following the presentation. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment, which is intended to allow on, comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda, but are limited to topics regarding municipal council business or purview. During public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium at this time. Any participating on Zoom can use their, the raise hand feature on their computer and we'll acknowledge them also. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment? If so, you can approach the podium. All right. If not, we'll close our public comment period and move to our first agenda item, which is an ordinance amending Provo City Code to reform, reformat a map related to some ADUs and to repeal the section related to special applications for ADUs. This will be presented by?
I'm going to introduce it. And then Malia's going to, to do some other stuff since. It wa, it was heard by the Planning Commission, let's see, on October 22nd. And it's regarding the section for the accessory dwelling units, Chapter 1430 dot 020 and 040, specifically the areas that deal with gathering signatures for a fee waiver and also the map that's showing the areas where ADUs are allowed and not. So the staff recommended, Planning Commission that recommend approval to the council, which they did in their meetings after some discussion. And we'll go ahead and let, I'll let Malia.
Thank you.
Give the rest of it.
Thank you, Nancy. Malia?
Okay, great. Thank you, Nancy. Nancy was the planner that our staff worked on with this down in Development Services. So as Nancy said, this went to Planning Commission after initial discussion by the council. And the two amendments here are, one, to change the map found in 020 of 1430, 1430 for the public is the accessory dwelling unit chapter of our code. And 020 specifically, that section of the code describes where ADUs are and are not allowed within the city. As part of that is this map. After speaking with legal and development services, we are proposing this new map, which gets rid of the title and the specific labels for the grayed out portions of the map. Those grayed out portions, just for information, are areas where people applied for ordinance text amendments to be added to the map as parcels that permit ADUs by land use by right. So this is the new map. That is the first half of this ordinance text amendment. The second is to repeal all of 143004. So this is the special use permit for accessory dwelling units. This originally written in 2022 was a two-part section. That first part was an administrative pathway, which the council voted to repeal at the beginning of this year. And then this is that second part of the original, which is the ordinance text amendment process, but does allow for signature gathering by the applicant, which would then result in a fee waiver. By repealing this, the process through which someone can get an ADU on their land for their property is the exact same way. All we're repealing here is for a fee waiver path, which is by getting signatures of neighbors. But someone can still apply for an ordinance text amendment to be added to the map or a rezone application to rezone their property to one that allows an ADU. That is all.
Thank you, Malia. Questions for Malia or staff? All right. Thank you, thank you, Malia. This item was noticed for public comment. If there are any here who would like to speak to this item, you can approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to council for discussion. Council members, any comments or questions or discussion? Counselor Whipple?
Yeah, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process with this permit program. As a council, we had seen a need, and this was an experiment that we tried, to be able to do an administrative permit process with neighborhood approval. And we saw some ways in which that process worked and some ways in which it did not work. And we have been learning through this. You know, it's an experiment where we, we did the best we could to craft the rules. We put it in place, we saw how it played out. And then based on the feedback that we've gotten, we are now saying that was a failed experiment. We are done with that. But I think this is a really good example of this, for the city to see how we are listening to your concerns, how we're trying to balance many valid, deeply held, competing interests of our residents. And we're trying to do it in a way that solves problems and reduces conflict. So the fact that this was a, a very short-lived ordinance, I think speaks to the fact that we are a responsive body and that we are trying to, to experiment and do what we can to serve you.
Thank you, Rachel. Others? Okay, we'll call for a vote then. On this ordinance. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Hoven?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
And Counselor Garrett, yes. So this ordinance passes by a vote of seven zero. Thank you, and thanks again, Malia and Nancy. Next, we have an implied motion on an ordinance adjusting design standards in the Provo City Code for certain development in the campus residential zone. This will be presented by one of our planners, Dustin Wright. Hello, Dustin, welcome.
Thank you. So this is a text amendment. The applicant has recently come into the city for a rezone to the campus residential on a property that he has and is looking to be able to further, be able to develop that property with eight units as opposed to the five that he was able to do under the existing ordinance. So he's looking to amend these two sections here in front of you today. From our design standards, the first one is the 30-foot habitable floor area. And the second one is for the location of driveways on the property that, that design standards currently say to put towards the side. He would like to have these modified to only be applicable to, or I guess easier to say, to not be applicable to units that are, or structures that are under 10 units and that are located in the campus residential zone. And so the Planning Commission has had a hearing on this and, and recommended approval of this text amendment to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Maybe Dustin define the campus residential zone. Generally located around campus, how much of the city does it entail?
Correct, yeah. So it's currently located in a few areas around campus. There's not too many spots that are currently in the campus residential zone. And so it would mostly be applicable to property that's rezoned in the future. So as properties around campus look to redevelop, this would be a zone that they potentially could do. But currently, there aren't too many that are zoned campus residential.
Okay. Um, questions for Dustin from the council? Thank you, Dustin. Is the applicant here where we could ask questions? Could you come forward, please? We met you once before. Please, for, for the record, remind us of your name and your city of residence.
My name is Terry Syrek. Thank you for meeting with me today. What I'd like to do is originally when we submitted the plan, we submitted for eight units to be installed. And then also to change the zoning from residential to the campus mixed use. We're approximately one block away from BYU. And also, we are one block away from the new medical school. We are surrounded by apartment complexes around all of our parcel that we have. A majority of them are three-story over parking and we're requesting two-story. The one that was approved by council was a one-story. And the reason it was is because we had a 30-foot requirement to put a parcel or a unit habitable area on the first floor. The design originally of my structure was to have units above the parking and have round level parking. And so, so that's what we had requested. Last August 7th, I, I sent in a camp, I sent in a pro-zone application. And then I was discouraged by Planning Department to submit a text amendment. And then after paying the $1,400, then I went ahead and paid another $1,200 and submitted on September 19th for a new design. I did submit some drawings and I thought maybe we could look at those.
Sure.
If that's okay.
Yes.
And they said that that would be here in the presentation.
Mm-hmm, here they are.
Those are the old drawings.
Okay. And initially, did you say it was eight units or five?
Originally, it was eight units submitted, but it was reduced to five because they wanted, they had the requirement by one zoning ordinance.
Okay.
One item. Those are old drawings. Could we use the new ones, please? Okay, these are the new ones here. This is the proposed plan that we have. We're 63-foot across the front. And we will stay within code for the building height. Matter of fact, will be lower than most others. We are complying with almost all of the items of the design standards. There are new 72 design standards and we are complying with most of those. We have Ken Harris Architect has designed this and we have a lot of brick, like I do with my other complex around the corner. And I think I have a photo of that. And then, so we're trying to make it nice and, and look appealing to the area. We have, I'm just trying to think, right now, we're trying to get six, six one bedrooms and two two-bedrooms. And our intent is to market that to the BYU Medical Center, the medical school. My complex that I have just around the corner, we have 70 beds. And it's called The Cottages. I think there's a photo of it. And it's well-maintained and, and is, I think, is, is well-done.
Seventy, seventy beds in how many units?
We have 16 four-bedroom units. And we also have the Tudor House there. And so, so we're so we're right around the corner. So I'm in the area.
Right.
And I'm working on these units continuously.
That's it. The Cottages is a beautiful project there on university.
I think I have a photo of that also included here. There's.
There it is. With the Tudor House just to the left there.
Yes, that's Dr. Wade's old home. Yes, and President Irene was next to that.
So you're looking to carry the same kind of same style of?
Not quite the same style, but the same makeup of brick. We were trying to match the Madden Night Hall, which is kitty corner and kind of matronize it and keep the Tudor House. But then we would like to use brick again and keep it nice like this complex here.
Okay. Questions for the developer, for Terry? Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
This item was noticed also for public comment, so we invite any who are here who would like to make a comment on this proposed ordinance to approach the podium. Seeing no public comment, we'll close that and bring the item back to council for discussion. Any questions, counselors, or discussion? Counselor McKay?
I'm excited about this project. I'm glad that we got more density on it approved it to be approved. It's the perfect area for it. And this was the sole single-family home left on a large lot that is surrounded by apartments. And I really appreciate when we have landlords in the area who keep their apartments nice and landscaped and well-kept inside and out and take care of their their renters and their residents. It's a big deal. Thank you.
And that we were able to limit the adjusting design standards to the campus residential zone. Thank you, Catrice. Other comments input?
I just want to echo what Catrice said. Thank you so much. I'm really glad that you worked with our staff and with the Planning Commission on this so that you can get the full eight units. And I appreciate that you have made really good contributions to our city. So thank you for working on that and continuing to help us improve.
All right, we'll call for a vote then. Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes, and Counselor McKay?
Yes.
So that ordinance, that motion passes by a vote of seven zero. Thank you, and thank you again, Terry. With the next two items related to the property in West Provo being continued, this concludes our agenda for this evening. So if there's no objection, we'll adjourn the Municipal Council by unanimous consent. Thank you.